Ready? Thank you very much. Welcome, everyone, to the Lincolnville Selectmen's Meeting. It is already the 10th of February. There was daylight in the sky as I drove here, so I'm taking that as a win. Josh, would you care to read the quote?
Sure. "The income tax has made more liars of the American people than golf has." Will Rogers.
Thank you very much. I would like to open the podium for any non-agenda items. Seeing nobody rushing up to the podium, let's move along to the Administrator's Report.
Just so you're aware, they dropped off an email from Diane O'Brien and Bob Ploss that arrived after the packet was done for you. That's a supplement to number 10. And before you go home tonight, pick up your draft budget for our review starting tomorrow. Just to, you know, be like an advertisement on TV for the benefit of the public and the board. We're looking to, first draft, ask the taxpayers for 1.23 percent less than the current budget here. I did.
You said less.
I did.
I hope there's a lot of townspeople watching.
Just say it one more time.
I hope there's a lot of townspeople watching.
Well, we were less last year.
David, you know we discourage dialogue between the audience and --
Sorry.
Because the people at home cannot enjoy the conversation also, and it will not be on record. For those of you who are unused to protocol here.
And, yeah, that's right. I ought to be by now. And that everything else that we've been working on besides the budget is on the packet pretty much tonight, so that's it.
Okay. Let's moving along, move along to upcoming meetings and announcements.
All meetings are here at the Town Office unless announced otherwise. The Board of Selectmen and Budget Committee will meet Tuesday, February 11th, 6:00 p.m. Planning Board meets Wednesday, February 12th, 7:00 p.m. Conservation Commission Thursday, February 13th, 4:00 p.m. Board of Selectmen and Budget Committee meet again on Thursday, February 13th, 6:00 p.m. Town Office is closed on Monday, February 17th, and observance of President's Day. And the Board of Selectmen meet next in regular session on Monday, February 24th, 6:00 p.m.
Thank you very much. Are there any upcoming community events anyone would care to share? Seeing nothing, let's move along to the meeting minutes from the 27th of January.
I move that the Board approve the January 27th, 2020 meeting minutes as presented.
We would second it. Any discussion? Seeing nothing, all those in favor? Thank you very much. And with no further ado, let's have a discussion about a possible septic system. Please come down and introduce yourself.
Good evening. I'm Bill Leahy from Gartley and Dorsky Engineering and Surveying, representing Heather Hurst, who is here tonight with her daughter. And Heather owns a cottage at 62 Norton Pond Road and owns an adjacent parcel on the north side of Norton Pond Road identified as map three, Lot 118. And Heather would like to pursue building a garage on that parcel. It's not sufficiently large enough to support a separate dwelling unit, but this would be a garage with some bedrooms in it to be an accompaniment to her cottage at 62 Norton Pond Road. The parcel is about three tons of an acre, and I believe there might be some mapping that was provided with it. This parcel is adjacent to the town-owned property, and in its vicinity, there are currently three easements for septic systems that benefit Heather's property as well as two other adjacent The proposal would be, we fully expect that while pursuing available soils for onsite wastewater disposal, we fully expect that there's a likelihood we won't be able to find sufficient soils on Heather's property, and we would like permission to pursue finding soils on the town parcel similar to has been done with these other easements to construct a septic system to support these additional bedrooms. And then if we are successful in finding that soil, then we would pursue an easement with the town. The costs to be borne by Heather, both the cost of recording easement and preparing easement. That's the nuts and bolts of the proposal and request. And first step would be, as David had suggested, to find out if it'd be okay with the town to go looking for soils.
Any questions for Bill?
Are there other lots that have more than one easement for more than one septic system like she's asking for? I mean, is there another lot down there that's got an easement for a current septic system for a dwelling and then another easement for a garage with living space?
I'm not aware that there is one in that configuration.
Are there lots that have more than one easement?
I don't believe so.
I don't, I don't think so.
Okay.
And it could be one of the, the first map in there that looks like that. The one that's identified as Almquist is currently the one that benefits the Hurst lot now. I'll wait till you find out sketch.
Is this going to be a rental?
No.
Sorry. Do you, any more, any more questions for, for Bill? Let's wrap up questions for Bill.
Do you happen to know if this is going to be a rental?
As I understand it, no, but Heather is here and she could speak to it if you'd like.
Any more questions for Bill specifically on their engineering work for the soils testing and the septic design?
Could the septic that is there for the dwelling be combined with the, could it all be turned into one?
In the same footprint, no. It's possible that we could pursue a configuration to expand the easement that's there now for benefit of 62 Norton Pond Road. I'm not sure that that will be the outcome because of the unique shapes of the other adjacent easements. One adjacent property, French and Williams, actually wraps behind Heather's easement, and so it really confines how much more expansion could occur taking off, from the takeoff point of the existing disposal field that serves 62 Norton Pond Road.
So it's why you have to kind of make another.
Make another, look for it, find out where it's not in conflict with other easements and conforms to the subsurface rules.
Yep.
So, it may say in here, and I didn't read fine, fine enough, but this is going to be in, above and beyond the septic system is already there now?
Yes.
Your game plan at this point in time is leave what's there there and put in this one separate from it. Is this going to be larger than the one that's there now?
Depending on soil conditions, I would expect it to be smaller, be for a smaller design flow.
Okay. What size is the one that's there now, do you know?
It's sized for just shy of 270 gallons.
So what, what they're looking for is for two-bedroom usage only?
Correct.
Okay. Any more questions for Bill?
So the concept of the building that this would be supporting, is it just two, you said a couple of bedrooms and a flush and a bathroom, or is there going to be a kitchen?
Not a kitchen, correct. It's, it's not, it's not sufficient to support a dwelling unit by itself. It's not enough land area. So it is just the bedrooms and a restroom, or bathroom, full bathroom.
And the, the easement that you're looking for is directly beside the one that's already there, or the?
It would depend on where we would find the soils and location considering setbacks and other requirements of the subsurface rules to site a first-time system.
Which would come back to us.
Yeah. The configuration would be presented to you in some form of a HHT 200 and a design prepared by our site evaluator.
Has, has there been any investigation into just expanding the current easement, modification to what's already there to support this?
I, I mentioned that that's one of the avenues that we would pursue. It doesn't look quite as likely because of the limitations imposed by the other easements that the town has granted to adjacent properties.
Yep, just a mo, just a moment, yep. Any other questions for Bill? Okay, thank you very much, Bill.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
And questions for the property owner? Would you care to come up and introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Heather. Hi, Kern. I am just looking for a couple of bedrooms, so when I have guests come, they can stay there. I'd actually only be using one for guests. We're moving out here full-time and it's a small cottage, so we just need an office really and storage. And the easement thing was a little unclear to me with your questions, because I think, I think what Bill was saying is that there are surrounding properties with other easements, and I just wanted to make sure that you heard that part, because you had asked.
More than one easement? That's what I asked.
Well, he, oh, I don't know, I just wanted to make sure you were just.
I wanted to make sure, I wondered if there were property, surrounding properties that had more than one easement for septic.
Yeah. Can I ask a question? Are, are these easements disruptive to the town in any way, or is this like giving access so we can just do this, or, like, is there any negative effect?
We'd have to, you can, you can, you can share the podium with her.
I just want to ask since it came up, and I want to be clear.
Well, the placement of the easement means that the town doesn't have full use of that land for anything else it might intend to do. However, that side of the, the property does not have inherent road frontage or other ready-to-go amenities that would be interfered with.
So why does my property have two already?
You don't have two easements. There's, there's, you have, you have one, you have one easement. This would be possibly a creation of a totally separate easement or reconfiguration of the existing easement to increase the land areas so that we could site another disposal field. So those are the potentialities.
And, and to be clear, we are not, we're not making any movements or motions or decisions tonight on the easement. We're talking about allowing soils testing to be done, to pursue, to come back to us to have an expanded conversation.
Absolutely. I just wondered if, it's, it's a request to put an additional easement on a piece of property that already has, that already has an easement, and I wondered if there were other properties much like yours that had more than one easement, meaning two septic systems.
Yeah. Oh, it's a good question, I didn't understand.
So that's what you're, that's what you're asking for. The other, the other thing that I was wondering is if there's going to be two septic systems, then potentially could be divided, could be rented, that's why I asked, so.
Good question, thank you, yeah.
Yeah. So, we're, we've just, if we needed to recap, so the potentiality exists for just an expanded easement or a separate location to site an easement. But in either event, it would not be a proposal to bring forward a new separate dwelling unit for sale.
Yeah. So it's an either-or. Either it can be expanded, if it can't, we're looking for another easement to get a septic system full.
Correct, yeah.
Yep. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any further questions for the property owner? Okay, you're safe. You can go sit down. Is there any further conversation or discussion on this topic?
I, is, forgive me if I'm just right out there on this, but abutting property owners don't have anything to do with this, right?
No, but.
Expansion?
No. I mean, this is.
I mean, it's, it's a septic system, it's, you have to have an easement to have it.
Well, it's a, it would be a, just a background and history for a number of people that do not know. Long before my arrival, or at some point prior to my arrival, the town was approached about have, allowing people to have easements on the town's property because they didn't have adequate spots for wastewater disposal and as a water quality preservation method. And the town granted that, the authority to the selectmen to allow for these easements. And then a couple of years ago, I think I put it in here, in nineteen, 2008, we went, we had another request, or series of requests for additional easements, went back to town meeting to verify that it was good, and the voters readily approved it. And we've issued a number since then, I think we have seven now on town property. And this is, one benefits the Hurst property. It wasn't issued to the Hurst, but the Hurst acquired the property and have, have enjoyed the benefit of the easement. And no one, to the best of my knowledge, no one has more than one, but there's nothing that prohibits it or an expansion to an existing one. If they had a septic system there that had a problem and they came to you to expand or put a new field in, you'd have the authority to grant them another easement or an easement in the same spot to do that. So.
Thank you.
I mean, ideally, and I'm sure Bill's aware, if you look at the next to the last sketch in there, the one that says, James and Ed Monhardt, that one was done, the one that was done in 2008, it shows on the upper right-hand corner, the little dash line, that's the easement that benefits the Hurst property now, and Monhardt's, which is no longer Monhardt's, by the way, are you using that paycheck card?
I finally got it, David.
Monhardt's is dark, and so right now, there's a, I don't know what the soils are or water courses or anything else, but there's a, there's a spot that butts up the back of the Hurst lot that remains there. And that's typically what we've encouraged people to do is to, if they were in this situation, to look at the land that's directly behind the land that they have so that they're not negatively impacting the neighbors or pumping it a half a mile down the road. Obviously, there are a number of things that enter into the design, you know, water courses, people's wells, proximity to the pond, proximity to other septic systems. So there's a lot of, a lot of nuances that have to be addressed. And when Bill contacted me about this, I said, "Well, since you have one, and this is something different with the construction of a new, new bedroom unit, you better come to the Board before you invest somebody's time and money in exploring something that may not fly." And hence why they're here.
Any more questions for anyone, or can I have a motion, please?
I move that all cops associated with this application, including but not limited to the required soils test easement survey and legal description plumbing permits, the construction be borne by applicant, that prior to issuing approval, the town requires that the applicant have a land survey completed with the area necessary for the construction and future maintenance of the septic system properly marked, and a description of this survey written that after the survey is complete, the site will be inspected by representatives of the town to ensure that no more land area than necessary is being requested, that the written description be given to the town attorney for preparation of the easement document, that the applicant, that the applicant receive an invoice for the town's cost associated with the attorney's work, and that after you have completed the above and pay the associated legal fees, including the estimated recording cost, the easement will be presented to the Board of Selectmen for their approval.
So moved.
Wow.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Well, seconded, thank you, and thank you all for the robust conversation. And if there is no further discussion, all those in favor, thank you very much. Thank you all for coming in. Nice to see you, Bill. Let's move along to Agenda Item Number Seven, our Committee Chair and Department Head Updates. We first have the Recreation Commission before us.
Hi. So I'm Stephanie Thostenson, I am now the Chair of the Rec Commission, and I am here tonight because we're going through the budgeting for next year, and we have all been aware that the baseball fields have had some real drainage issues that have prevented spring usage. And so what we have done is pursued finding some estimates about how we might proceed to address this. So you should have some information that has basically three different options, and I'm not sure which way we want to go. So the first one is from Landmark, and it is a very comprehensive approach to it, totaling They're prepared to get started as soon as we want to, if we choose to take that approach. Part of the problem is that the, the, the build, the fields were built by volunteers, and I don't know that there's an actual plan in existence showing how the drainage was dealt with. And it's been, what, roughly 15 years, I think, since they were put in place. So this would be a very comprehensive approach, very long-term looking, and make sure that we get, you know, do everything we can for the longevity of it. It was higher than we anticipated, so we went back to them and asked if there was a smaller version that we could do, to which there's an email that responds from Landmark with a figure of roughly $5,000, which, again, would be much more scaled back. The question that I think Joel posed in his email is whether or not that would really give us sufficient information to make sure that we're taking the best approach. And then Dave also had an opportunity recently to have a conversation with someone, and I don't recall his name off the top of my head, at Gartley and Dorsky, who said, here we go, and I think there might be, I don't know if you guys got a copy of this email, William Lane, who has offered for about $1,100 that we could include a site visit and informational meeting. So we kind of have three different options with a huge span, and my biggest concern is we want to get going on this as quickly as possible so that we can get full use of the field. And so I need to, we need to kind of know what you guys think in terms of what approach do we want to take. And then based on that, I also want to have a quick discussion about using some of the unused funds that we have in the budget currently so that we can get started on this.
Well, and just to clarify, all of these numbers are for professional design services only, not for the execution of the work.
Correct. Absolutely. This is just professional design, survey, topographical surveys, yeah, it does not include any of the work there. We did in the process, I had a walk-around with Todd Young, who was involved in the original building of the fields, and asked him and I, if, you know, if he thought we could do French drains kind of between the two fields and divert some of the water, which in hopes would help give it a place to drain, meaning that it's not staying on the fields. And so he gave me a number of $11,000. And he also said, "I really am not comfortable doing this work because I'm not convinced that this is the best approach." He didn't feel that his expertise was good enough to, you know, take into account the whole thing. So he was recommending an engineer come in and take a look. So that's, that's kind of supporting why we're going with, you know, Landmark and Gartley and Dorsky.
So my first question, what's wrong with fields? Give me a, tell me what's up.
So the, there are three fields. There's the upper baseball field, or the Babe Ruth field, that the school baseball, the Howell School, middle school team plays on. The outfield there is soggy into the centerfield area and right behind second base. So that's the best field. And then from there, there's the next field, which is the Little League field, which is down lower, and then the swath between the two. I was out there in the middle of June this last year and was still sinking six inches into muck in the path in between. So what happens is there's a slight pitch, very slight, from the upper field to the lower field, and then there's, my understanding is there is some drainage that was put into the lower field to help with that runoff, but I don't know the state of that. And so then what happens is that everything in between the two fields is really soggy, and then centerfield and up behind second base on the lower field is not playable until well into June. So the Five-Town Little League has been wanting to use the field recently, and they, you know, they, they serve all the five towns and have really done a great job, but they really rely on this field, and they haven't been able, they didn't get to use it at all this year, and I think barely last year. So that's part of the problem. There's also a practice field right behind the Little League field that Five-Town Little League would like to start using for their T-ball program, and have offered to help revitalize that with some funding and some, some volunteer hours. And we've also talked about, you know, either redoing the Green Monster or possibly getting rid of it. But I kind of, if we're going to be digging up ground to deal with drainage, I want to do that before we do any of this other stuff. It doesn't make sense, because then we're having to, you know, undo or redo. So basically, the ball, the lower ball field doesn't get used until well into June. And then the soccer field down, the lowest, furthest back, also has a little bit of an issue in some areas, which is the least affected because the use of that field is mostly by the soccer team, the middle school soccer team, which happens in fall. So they don't, they don't, it doesn't keep them from using the field, but we do have other people who ask to use the field. What is it? Lacrosse asks, I think it's lacrosse or field hockey, one of them asks to use it in the summer and stuff, so.
Okay, thank you.
So it, it looks, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but it looks like Gartley and Dorsky was saying, "For 1,100 bucks, we can look at Rec, we can interview you, find out what's going on, you know, talk to people, find out what's, like, you just answered Josh's questions, right? And then using existing documents of the layout of the place, if we put something together that could probably do the job." And then, and then this other company's saying, "For $15,000, we can do the same thing." I'm kind of.
Well, it would be a comprehensive survey, soils testing, hydrology, I mean, it would be a.
Okay, all right, so it's not, all right, so.
It would be.
Apples to oranges. All right, okay, okay. So it isn't, it's not apples-naps, all right.
No, no.
So they're, they're going, "We'll go in and we'll really assess it."
Yes.
And get under the gr, and see, yeah, okay.
It's like apples to crab, apples to cherries.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
There's no comparison.
Right, okay, all right.
I mean, that being said, Bill Lane was just sitting here in this room. It's unfortunate.
Okay.
It's unfortunate that he's, he scuttled away so quickly. He's a smart man, but.
He knew, huh?
He saw you.
I have no doubt that they would do a very quality job, and.
The, the, the fourteen.
No, that Gartley and Dorsky, for the 1,100 dollars. But before we, before we even get there, I, I'm somewhat hung up procedurally, and I am low, I don't want to come across as admonishing you at all. And congratulations and condolences on being the Chair of the Recreation Commission, because you definitely, you have, you have, you have a lot of responsibility in your hands. And so I, I commend you on trying to get a ball, the balls rolling here and thinking proactively. However, it is very frustrating to get all of these numbers before us, five minutes before we go on camera. It's really. It's really challenging. So it is, yes, it is better than having it presented to us during your budget presentation, but by increments. And also I'm curious, this conversation got started a month ago. I'm sort of scratching my head and we don't need to dwell on why Kayla was the point person as opposed to our town administrator, who typically is the first point of contact and then may choose to delegate it to someone else. And, and why we only went, why we only approached one vendor. And then I'm grateful for David approaching at least another vendor so that we have these, a spectrum and what a spectrum we have.
Yes, it is.
And I always feel very, I don't feel as secure as I would like to in my decision-making when we're offered a spread that is so desperate as we have here. So the timing's not ideal and we don't need to beat that. And so as you said, you would like to get this done before we have, before our next budget year. So we're looking at our current budget year. We've spent about twenty-five percent out of the athletic fields budget line. So there is just under twenty-six thousand dollars sitting in that account. I know we did carry forward some funds because we didn't get work done previous budget year. So assuming the board decided to go with the lowest bidder of eleven hun- or not bidder, but the lowest number of eleven hundred dollars. And then assuming, once we put it out to bid, because we would have to put the job out to bid, that we get that number back of ten, eleven thousand dollars, that's going to leave us with best case scenario about thirteen thousand dollars. So I throw it back at you. What are we, what are we going to give up?
So excellent question. Looking at what we have spent specifically this year and what we still have to spend, we have a little bit left in the sports field aspect of, you know, we contract with them to do a lot of the maintenance and fertilizing and that kind of stuff. So we'll have a little bit left there. There was a lot of work that didn't get done this last fall because we had such a wet spring and everybody got pushed off. So it's not work that we can skip. We have to do it, but now we have to do it in the spring as soon as they can get on the field.
And so the dollar figure for that is?
That's, uh, looks like, because I don't have that exactly. That doesn't look right. About ten thousand. So what our budget says is we have ten thousand dollars left in the work that we budgeted with Sports Field.
So we would, we would assume that we've contracted with them to do necessary work.
Right.
So we're going to plan on spending ten thousand dollars.
The only reason we wouldn't spend it before the end of the fiscal year is because they can't get on the field because we have another extremely wet spring. So I'm looking at it and saying, we need to plan on spending that.
Sure. And that comes out of the athletic fields line? So that comes out of that thirteen thousand dollars we have left, correct?
I think so.
Yeah. So that, so that leaves us with just under four thousand dollars.
So let me, let me give you a little background. So as I came on as the chair, I approached this very much looking forward. And then said, oh, wait, we're still in the current year. So I'm a little behind.
Yep.
And I don't fully track or understand yet the way that the budget is put together that you see. So I've kind of, I approach it a little bit differently, so I apologize for that. I can't talk apples to apples with you.
Yep, yep.
So, uh, so there's that. And so based on what Kayla and I looked at today, let me try this and see if this makes sense to you. Based on what Michaela and I looked at today, with what we're still expecting to spend this year with Sports Field, with everything that we've agreed to do with them, asked them to do. And any additional maintenance and the dugout staining, those are still pieces that are, you know, expected to be spent. And then what we've budgeted for the year, including our carryforwards from previous years and the Green Monster rehab. So what I'm looking at is a total budget of thirty-four thousand one hundred six dollars. And I realize I should probably make a copy of this for you. And what we've spent and what we still have to spend leaves us with thirteen thousand four hundred eighty-nine dollars that is budgeted and doesn't, is not specifically earmarked to be spent right now. Now that includes not doing anything with the Green Monster. It includes the carryover from the previous years. So that's what I'm looking at is a figure of thirteen thousand. And what I would like to do is take some of that and put that towards our engineering and at least get the engineering piece done. And if we can get some of the work done, great. And then moving forward, also looking at budgeting in money for next year, which in our budget proposal for next year, we put the eleven thousand from Todd Young's estimate for French drains. Does that make sense? Did I speak that clearly?
So of the, of the twenty-four thousand that's in there now still, there's thirteen that isn't claimed.
Right.
When you use some of that for the engineering, okay, yeah, just to be sure.
Great.
Hearing, correct.
Well, and I just want to make sure when, I just want to know where, is that the additional thirty-five hundred dollars that's in the budget? I'm just trying to do rapid math quickly to figure out where this thirty-four thousand total number is coming from.
I don't know what you're looking at, so.
Oh, I'm just looking at the expense report for athletic fields and then.
Is that in this packet?
It is, yeah. And looking at what we budgeted. So we budgeted twenty-eight thousand three hundred and twenty. We have spent ninety-one hundred. So there's twen- so we've spent five thousand three hundred and ten dollars thus far. We have twenty-five thousand nine hundred ninety-seven dollars, ninety-eight cents. But in line eighty, there is.
That's the, that's the athletic infrastructure. That was the tennis court money.
Okay. I'm just wondering where the extra nine thousand dollars that Kayla says that we have is.
The notes that I have, again, doesn't directly map onto what you're looking at, but I have general maintenance twenty-five hundred, carryforward forty-four thirty-six, Green Monster rehab twenty-seven hundred, and then another carryforward of twenty-three five, twenty-three fifty. A little bit left over for marking paint and about twelve hundred, thirteen hundred left over from Sports Field.
Okay. I guess my question to you, David, is, is that all included in this budget line or is there money somewhere else?
In several budget lines, on the bottom of page five and the top of page six, what you're looking at.
Yes.
Under athletic fields, maintenance or improvements. And then under the top of the next page, under the maintenance.
Yep.
You can see the unexpended.
Yep.
Funds. That's where all of those numbers that Stephanie was just sharing with you are.
Okay.
Yep.
Twenty-nine, six, is that what you're referring to?
What's that?
So the top of page six, okay.
Yep.
Twenty-nine, nine, six.
Okay.
Or whatever.
My, um, without having the benefit of a whole lot of time and thought in myself, back up a little bit. First thing is, I don't think too many people would dispute that if you want to use particularly the lower field, the Little League field, anytime before early June, you better have water skis on. And the initial proposal from Landmark, when somebody bounced a number off me, was like, wow, that's a very thorough proposal. And.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, you know, there's, I'll never fault somebody for being thorough. And I'm not saying we shouldn't be thorough in our work, but there are certain levels of work and effort sometimes that can be expended and still get the same result or close. And I had the privilege of speaking with Mr. Lane regarding the Hearst thing. So I just started bouncing things off from him on the phone and said, you know, this is the situation we are in. And to get to the point where we have a document that we can incorporate into our normal documents to send to some local people to get some pricing, we worked up a much simpler scope. And I'm sure that if you ask any, anybody if they could do a topographical survey with one-foot contours and locate each fence post, you'd end up with, you know, fifteen thousand dollars worth of effort. But I don't think we were there. Hence the reason Bill sent me an email saying, you know, we could do a simplified approach. Regardless, if you choose to take on the engineering of this in the current fiscal year, we obviously didn't budget for it. There are some funds that are likely available between now and June thirty in the existing budget to take on at least a reduced engineering scope. The likelihood of anything being installed in this current fiscal year is pretty slim for a couple of reasons. One, you've got to get out there and do the work to find out what you have, prepare big things, get it out to bid and whatnot. And when you go to install something like this, you, not to say you couldn't do it when it's wet, but you're a whole lot better off doing it when it's dry or drier because you will make one hellacious mess if you're out there in April trying to install an underdrain. It's just, not to say you can't do it, but it's not a real practical installation and the cost goes up when you're out there digging and mucking around. I would encourage, I guess at this point, the board, if they wanted to move forward with something, would be to help determine the level of effort that we wanted to expend in terms of the design, pull the trigger on that and continue the discussion about the monies to do the installation when we get to our budget conversations because you're not going to do it in this current fiscal year anyways, or highly unlikely.
Yeah, fair enough. As nice as that would be. Okay, so we can, we can table the beating, the fine numbers for a day coming soon to all of us. And so what are the board's thoughts in terms of entertaining engineers for having survey and design work done?
Well, I, I've had a lot of really good experiences with Gartley and Dorsky and I have a lot of faith in their, their abilities and their work. I mean, that's meaningful to me. And I, I mean, I know there's a big difference between the numbers, but it seems like what's in the budget, it's a very, it, it's feel, and I'm, this is like a, just a gut feeling to me. It's, I don't know anything about the other company, but it feels to me like, at least initially, we could get some significant bang for the buck with what we have to work with, by going with Gartley's estimate at this point. And I mean, like, kind of, I was just sort of picturing in my mind when you were talking that, it seems like it wouldn't take, I mean, maybe to really set that thing for good and just get it all done at once. I mean, you might, you know, maybe it, it would, it would, you know, make sense to spend a, a bunch of money on the comprehensive thing. But it sounds to me like with a lot less effort, you could at least really significantly address the wetness on that lower field. And I mean, we could, we could get a lot out of, I think we can get a lot out of that. With that, that would be meaningful. And then maybe, maybe if the work gets done, you, you know, and there's still some problems to address, I know maybe this is like an incremental thing instead of, you know, banging it out fifteen thousand dollars and having it, you know, maybe if, I mean, see how much you can get done for the eleven hundred dollar engineering and then having someone do that work and see how effective that is and go, wow, that's, it's, you know, if that turns out great, then you can go, well, can you, can we give, you know, can you charge us another eleven hundred dollars to do, you know, this section over here that still seems wet or something? See, I'm, I'm just, I'm just, you know. But my gut is, I feel good about them and, but I don't have experience with the other companies, so.
I certainly think, to chime in, both, both of these companies are quite capable. And I think the initial proposal was more create the base map upon which, you know, future work could be done. And I guess the question becomes, do you want to address the problem at hand or do you want to address the problem at hand as well as create a map upon which, you know, future changes and what else might be done? I just was, I wasn't quite to that point when I saw the, heard the numbers.
And certainly at this point in the budget season, just, you know, writing that size of a check to ha- I, I mean, it's just, this isn't something that I would encourage the board to approve at that price tag. But that being said, it doesn't preclude future boards or future rec commissions from having that conversation of creating said comprehensive because it doesn't exist. Map of the facility, but.
I will tell you, one of my biggest concerns for somebody who has kids who's played, who have played on the fields, who, I play on the fields myself. And I've done my share of building and working on my own house. And I'm really, I want to be really conscientious about not putting money in to plug this hole right now and then find out that, you know what, that really didn't do it. And if we'd have just spent a little bit more time and a little bit more effort in the beginning, we could really, you know, have a long-term plan. So I just want to make sure, and I, I agree, I, you know, that's a huge, there was some sticker shock there. I think there's got to be something in between. I don't, my concern is that if you limit us to exactly the eleven hundred, that that may stifle the work. So maybe we have some leeway, like up to five thousand that we could spend and, you know, look at different stages along the way or, you know.
I, I, I absolutely hear where you're coming from. However, we have to decide whether we think Landmark, essentially the two choices we've been given here tonight, whether Landmark and Gartley and Dorsky would be capable of fixing, of creating a design to address the water drainage issues in the athletic fields. And I firmly believe that Gartley and Dorsky could adequately create a design for eleven hundred dollars to execute that. And I would just say, from my personal position here on this board, I would, we don't budget extra money into our budget. I know that some communities do, but our community does not budget extra funds. And I'm upset and I would like a follow-up on these extra funds that are undesigned within this particular budget line, lines. this particular budget line, lines. Um, but if we're going to be, I have to believe that the funds that we appropriated to be used by the rec commission to maintain and improve our facilities all have a purpose. So if we're going to be taking any amount of dollars from those, I wanna make sure that they're utilized in the best way possible and offering in up to is not, because it means that we're taking money from something else. And it means that whatever we told the voters last June wasn't true. And I'm not okay with that either.
Okay.
So.
I'm, I don't, I guess I, I s- I hear what you're saying about the, you know, the Band-Aid, like we're gonna just put a Band-Aid on it. I guess for me, I, again, I can only speak to my experience with those guys. I, I, and it seems like they unders- from what they've written here, that they understand the idea that they need, we need something to base future stuff on. And I feel like if they're saying they can do that, I trust them.
I guess my concern is, I don't take an email today of saying, we could probably do something for about eleven hundred dollars as a hard and fast estimate. I am totally.
But you put in front of us, a local contractor said, we had a contact to say, the work he thinks needs to be done would cost about eleven thousand dollars, which is in front of us here. But also in another breath, you said the contractor wouldn't get involved with it because he really doesn't know what we need. That same contractor. So this is kinda, I'm sorry, but it's very contradictory, okay? I'm willing to spend the money with Gartley and Dorsky up, and, and a little bit more to get it done right there. But what we've been talking about for years there is the upper field drains onto the second field, or the lower field. The lower field, the water doesn't go down through the field. Here's the thing. We need a drain there to keep the water from draining from the upper field to lower field. And little league field needs to be resurfaced because it's on clay. Water doesn't drain through clay. Okay, just saying, we've been talking about it for years. Um, the money that you're talking about not doing anything with the green monster. And I'm sorry, Stephanie, I've remained quiet here because I wanted to be polite, but I'm extremely frustrated. Okay, for two budget periods, I have looked taxpayers in the eye and promoted money from their pockets to fix the green monster. Just like I have asked them for money to paint and or replace picnic tables at Breechmere Park. Neither of those two have been done. What am I gonna say to the taxpayer this year? What? I'm sorry, Stephanie. I'm sorry, I can't get behind this. I'll have a reputable firm look at that, but they're gonna look at it not when the snow is on it. And they're gonna talk to the people who know what is going on there and local contractors who had hands in building it. So that the right decision can be made. I've said this to you before. I've said it to chairs before, to uh, chairs of that committee before. No one's getting it. I should use these same words. I'm not a builder. I'm not a contractor, but I'm not an idiot. I'm sorry. That's all I got.
So are you saying you're behind it? You're kinda behind the Gartley and Dorsky idea?
I think it's worth up to three thousand dollars to have them, I, my personal opinion.
Right, yeah, no.
This is, this is town infrastructure.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, and I'm looking at the list of people who were involved in this and I'm like, what, what is going on here?
Yes, Josh, yeah.
Um, so we wouldn't be putting the design services out to bid, correct?
Uh, I, if, if we were talking about a figure that Landmark proposed in the initial proposal, we would have to.
As long as it's under eight thousand, right? We don't have to put out the bid, is that what we're done with? What's the, what's the bid cutoff number?
I think it's something.
Eight thousand. I mean, you can bid anything.
We can bid anything, I, I have, while I've been sitting in this position, I have encouraged boards for full transparency to bid most things that are over a couple of thousand dollars.
The challenge for the recreation commission or anybody else, um, and we'll use this project, potential project as an example, is it's very hard to define the scope, what you want to do. And if you can't necessarily define the scope of what you want to do when you go to talk to an engineering firm, they're going to come and tell you what they think they see as the possible scope. And you can get a wide spectrum of what they think, what they perceive your problem to be and what they perceive your potential solution to your problem to be. And it's, it's very challenging to bid something like that out when you don't know what you need, what you need for services. You're going, you know.
It entirely depends on the questions that you're asking.
Right. So.
Answers you receive back.
You've got obviously a multitude of choices and, and options available to you from selecting one of these and deciding, taking a half a step back and saying, what are we trying to accomplish with the professionals we're going to bring on board? Is it to create a plan that we can use in the future, plus address the drainage, plus do this and this and this? Or is it address the drainage challenge on a, close to a sho- shoestring? So that we can put the money towards putting pipe in the ground to drain the problem? And that, it's, it's, it's not an unusual challenge for us. And to a certain extent, um, I wish I hadn't stuck my nose in it when I was talking to Bill. But the initial proposal, and it's not easy to get these people out to look at too. There's not a whole lot of options out there. But the initial proposal just struck me as beyond what I had envisioned that we needed to address drainage
Can I suggest that perhaps we invite Bill back? Um, at our next regular meeting and just have a conversation about what he wrote in his email and.
I don't think we, I don't think we need to impose on his time. I mean, he very clearly stated in the email, the nature of the conversation he had with David, what he understands is the problem in that they would perform the design work for eleven hundred dollars, including the site visit and informational meeting to present their recommendations to us.
Right, like if you were at that informational meeting or something, you know, you just said, like, this is LeBron, this goes onto this and then they, you know, things clay. I mean, you know, that was like, that part was great, what you just said. So I mean, if you're saying that to him in this informational meeting where someone is, you know.
Right.
I mean, then they, that person will have a clear idea of the scope, you know, a clearer idea and, and.
Well, and I would, I would expect, and knowing, having worked with Bill in a couple of different projects.
Yeah.
He would be absolutely upfront in saying, well, I can't imagine there would be a scenario, someone at home's gonna be real upset that I backed up, Rosie. Um, you want to, but that, uh, if there were something that he hadn't considered, Kern, that you brought up at a presentation, he would go back and address it and bring it to us and let us know if that was an additional sum or whatnot. But I, I have every confidence that this would get us where we need to go, given the fact that this is something getting, again, thrown on to, which will be a deficit from monies that are, should already be earmarked for something else. So I'm, I'm unwilling to spend any more than the eleven hundred dollars for Gartley and Dorsky to do this design work. Considering that we're taking money from something else. Unless we choose to take money from, you know, unexpended fund balance or, you know, take there's money from somewhere else or something, you know, but.
Thirteen thousand that's not accounted for in the, in the, in the rec committee budget is, is actually accounted for something or you're saying that that's?
Well, what I'm saying is that my understanding when we approved the budget.
Yeah.
Last year.
Right.
And when we presented the budget to the taxpayers, every penny had a purpose.
Right, so now.
Because we've never, ever just left
Got it.
extra money for anything in any of our departments. We argue over contingency.
Right, okay, so something's not adding up, but this idea that there's thirteen thousand that's not, you're, I mean, it was originally put there for something, so, so.
Which isn't to say that priorities change. Priorities always change.
Right.
Things, different things come up. And I'm not saying that this isn't a priority. Clearly, it is a massive priority.
Yeah.
And poor Stephanie, it's, I'm sorry, you were completely, it's like, shooting the messenger. And we, so, like, a- any level of frustration isn't directed at you personally, it's the situation.
Thank you.
Um.
So line, line sixty, the twenty-five thousand nine nine seven that's remaining, was any, did any of that roll over from the last budget? Because I don't have a recollection of that.
That was the, that was the conversation that we were sort of digressing into and considering the fact that we're not looking at bidding out the actual work of the drainage in this budget year. And in tomorrow, and the next day, we're, we're going to be really pulling these numbers apart. I don't know how much we need to try to, um, dissect those numbers. I wish we had that same printout that you and Kayla went through on Friday to read through and consider over the weekend, but we've already beat that point to death. Um, because then I would be able to look at the expense report, you know. We know we've spent twen- a little over twenty-five percent of the monies that we've budgeted. And where she's pulling those numbers from, I suspect that they're different budget lines.
That all makes sense.
That it's, but that also, I don't have confidence in just saying, well, we can do this and we can do this and we can do this and we can do this. Woo, here's the money. Cause again, we don't budget extra dollars, ever. Never have done that. So, yes.
Well, the answer is to selectman Garrettson's question. If you look at those, bottom of page five and the top of page six, the budget adjustment column, which in the bottom of page five shows twenty-three fifty, and the top of page six shows four thousand four hundred thirty-five dollars and ninety-eight cents. Those were monies that were brought forward from previous year.
Okay.
And the budget is, just not to dispute the chair, but the budget is a budget too. It's not an actual, we don't know. Number of things, we put the best, our best foot forward when we prepare the budget, but some of the stuff is subject to the whims of the marketplace.
Sure. Um, so really the question is, the situation that's been presented to us. We have drainage issues on our infrastructure. Do we want to and who do we want to hire to do design work? That's the question, really, after all of this. So.
Or do you want to, give you another option, not do it with funds in the current budget year and budget for the services kicking as of July one?
Well, I've kept my mouth shut. I shouldn't do that, but. I think we really ought to do something tonight. This has gone on, I've said for eight years.
Thank you.
The board.
Mm-hmm.
And even if we need to do a little bit more next year because we didn't get it all done, I think, I think we ought to have Gartley and Dorsky for eleven hundred dollars, give us the best shot that they can, what it's gonna cost. And even if the point, we, during the next two nights, we decide that we may need to add a little money in the budget to do what we're totally guessing may need to be done in the fall. You can't do anything in the spring anyway. It's gonna be fall before you can put a piece of equipment out there with the games, the lot and everything else. And do what we can with it, give it a year and see what it does. And that means two years from now, we may be, we, we may have to have the big discussion of do it, going a lot further with, uh, planning. Because if that doesn't solve seventy-five percent of our problem, then we're probably gonna have to spend the money, find out where, if there's springs tucked away, we don't know about. If there's water coming from someplace that we aren't thinking of.
Well, or also, do we wanna open this conversation up to our partners in maintenance of the athletic fields in the LCS? World of things where they, they help us pay for, pay for this, even though it's all the same pot.
Oh, yes.
I gotta say, it's funny, my experience, I mean, my short time here, that I, I feel like every time I muddle into the, does it's like, or do, does, does LCS take this much responsibility for their game? And it keeps coming back to our plate, cause it's our fields.
I know, I just had to stir the pot.
Really against that now from, and also with the, with the whole thing, just going through with the E-team and all that, it's like, every time. Even the littlest conversations having to do with school and select board. It, it just, the, the, it's so clear to me now that these, these fields are the select board, the town's responsibilities. We just gotta embrace that and deal with it.
I love it, I managed to push a button.
No, I mean, it's per, they're really, like, I feel like that, I actually, I'm clear on, not much, but that one, I feel pretty clear on.
Okay.
Just, it keeps coming back to our plate.
Yeah, Josh.
I move that we, um, hire Gartley and Dorsky engineering surveying for the amount of eleven hundred dollars for the scope of work outline in the email to our town administrator dated February third, twenty twenty.
Moved in second and any further discussion. Seeing nothing, all those in favor. Thank you very much. And to be continued.
Thank you, Stephanie.
And next we have our EMA director.
Hi, I'm Peter Rollins. I'm the EMA director and I am also on the recruitment and retention committee for the fire department. Um, here to kinda get a conversation started about a new idea I haven't found any fire department or any EMA has done anywhere yet. So we're kinda making new, breaking new ground here. Um, it's really no new news that the volunteer fire departments are kinda waning a little bit around the country. Everybody's looking for more people, having problems with manpower and, um, so we've been kicking around some ideas about how to fix it around here. We're pretty fortunate with Lincolnville, we're very healthy and we have a very good mutual aid relationship with all of our towns. And actually, I seem to be getting better. Right now, we're on the upswing from mutual aid. Um, so we're always looking for new firefighters. And everybody on the fire department will tell you when they approach somebody, they're either like, yeah, I'm interested, or I don't have the time. I can't commit to that. So we, you're kinda having the idea of saying is, well, you know what, we got something for you. Um, the idea is have a reserve, uh, membership of the department. So that, uh, if somebody's interested in just doing traffic control or, uh, welfare checks on people, if we have a big ice storm, uh, these are the things where we get stretched thin, where we can't send guys to every area of the town. Um, so we need more people. So if somebody is interested in just, uh, doing welfare checks or radio communications, so, sitting at the, at their center station, taking notes, walking, working on the radios, things like that. Um, so that's kind of our idea. Uh, we will comply with all the BLS. Everybody will be trained in what they're gonna do, what they're interested in doing. If, uh, you know, somebody just wants to do traffic control, well, then we'll train you in traffic control. That's all we're gonna ask you to do. If somebody wants to do radios, then we're gonna train you on radios. So that's basically the idea. I think you have a kind of an outline. It's new. This, I haven't been able to find any town that's done anything like this yet. So we're kinda making this up and maybe if we're successful, this will become a model for other towns. Um, but I'm here to kinda get the conversation going. And if we do this, we might be asking all of you to be involved to some degree.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, it's awesome, yeah.
Well, so, Pete, with training people to do specific and/or maybe more than just a specific job, are you also thinking training people to go do a wellness check, that type of thing?
Yes.
Instead of having you firefighters do that?
Well, and that's part of the problem too, is if we're spread all over town, if we have a big ice storm, or if we're around town, you know, blocking roads with our personal vehicles, well, now we're not available for a fire, or if there's a car accident somewhere. So allow the firefighters who have their specific training to be more available to respond to. You know, when we have a big event like that, it seems like there's always a house fire, or something happens when we're, when we're running around trying to cover the whole town. So, yeah, that's, it'll allow us to do more things, and hopefully, you know, we'll give people a kind of a view into the fire department, and maybe they might wanna join and go through the, the entire process and become a firefighter.
Would that, or could that include, like, CPR in that basic, basic first aid? Is that included in the?
Absolutely. I would say that, and I'm sure the chief would say the same thing. Every bit of training that we do, like, we're gonna be doing a hazmat first responder coming up. You know, and, and you're invited to all of us. Anything that we do, you're invited to come to do the training, and if you're comfortable performing that type of thing, then when we need somebody to go do something, then, all right, we're gonna, we're gonna call.
I think that's fantastic.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, I love the idea too, that you could be as much or as little as a person wants to, if they just were like, look, I wanna help out with wellness checks, they could just, you train them in that, and they could just go do that, why not?
And you'd keep a, you'd keep a roster and just say, okay, we need these people, send them a text.
Yeah, oh yeah, everybody, we have, all of our cell phones now, we have this thing called I am Responding, and we're dispatched over our pagers and also on our phones.
Yeah.
So we can have a list, a group on our phones of people who we can just page out. We can do that through Knox Communications. We can also send out the pages right through our center station.
Very cool. That's great. What do you need from us to?
Nothing. We, we have a recruitment and retention budget that this, this kind of thing could come out of, if we're gonna give everybody yellow jackets or whatever they need.
Yeah.
Come out of that budget that we have. We just kinda wanted to let you know that this is something that we're looking to do, and if you have any ideas, you know, we're, we're kinda putting it together now and developing it.
Yeah. Well, let us know if we can help, you know, getting the word out, or, you know, when trainings are coming up, that we can, you know, announce it during meetings or, or whatnot to improve communication. Yeah?
Okay.
Any other thoughts or input for?
I, I just, I think the forward thinking is really gonna do what the department needs, and that's forward thinking. I like it.
That's great.
Very good.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And our fire chief. Have fun.
Don Fullington, Fire Chief. We had our elections in January, and all the members decided to keep everything the same, so it's not a whole lot to do on personnel and stuff like that. We've added four new members this year. We've lost one member. Hopefully, Pete's idea and everything else will maybe gain, gain a couple here and there every year. They come and go, so it's, it's, it's an excellent idea. But have you guys been informed about Tanker Three, our truck that we've had, we've had continuing problems with this truck? And I believe it's definitely going to affect our truck budget this year.
What's going on with that? I don't mean to interrupt you.
No, what's going on is, it's an automatic transmission truck, like all of them, and when you put the truck into pump gear, the transmission shifts into fourth gear, and it locks up the torque converter. For anybody that doesn't understand, an automatic transmission, it's kind of like, if you think of a manual transmission, you put it in fourth gear and you just let the clutch out. The car stalls. It doesn't have enough power to propel the truck or car, and that's what's happening. And that's what the computer tells it to do when you shift the truck into pump gear. So what's happening is you fire up the truck to go to a fire call, you're shifting into gear, and it shuts off. And it's happened multiple times at the department, as well as on a couple of fire scenes.
And? Well, how old is this truck?
It's, it'll be seven years old. It's only got seventy-five, seventy-six hundred miles on it.
Okay.
Um, the last, we've had it to three dealers now. The last one was an international dealer. They actually ran into a similar problem a couple of years ago with a Pierce fire truck, which worked in our benefit because he figured out what was causing the problem, not actually how to fix it. It was related to all of the emergency lights being turned on before the truck was shifted from neutral to drive.
Wow.
So you just leave the master switch off for all your emergency lights, and the truck's fine. You turn that master switch on, and five out of six times, the truck stalls.
So there's no course of action as of yet as to how to fix it?
Um, AJ, who's in truck of all the truck, in charge of all the truck maintenance, he has been in contact with the second-to-last Pierce dealer that it was at, so that, and tell him the series of events that actually caused the problem now. They're discussing this with Pierce so that they can maybe come up with a resolution before we actually bring the truck down there, so we're not down a truck for however much time.
But so for right now, as long as you keep the master switch off?
Yes, hopefully.
That seems to be the only problem.
So you really can't count on the truck?
Not a hundred percent, no. So everybody on the fire department's been notified, you know, if this happens, shut the truck off, shut the lights off, restart the truck, leave the lights off until you're underway, then turn the lights back on. And this has been going on for a couple of months now, at least.
So where you, they don't have a plan of attack as to how to fix it, how do you know if it's gonna affect your budget?
Because it's probably going to be costly from the sound of it, diagnostic electrical wise, because the, in my eyes, being a boat mechanic, it seems like it's a pretty hard one to figure out because the transmission on the chassis should be pretty far electrical wise from your emergency lights. You know, where, where those two intertwine. So, I mean, maybe it's something that has happened all the time with the Pierce truck. And nobody's caught it, and maybe it'll fix it. But we've had three different bills now, two, that are, you know, in excess of what we've already budgeted for maintenance on that truck this year. I'm not sure what the totals were for all of them. I think one of them was five hundred dollars. I mean, I, I don't think we're talking tens of thousands of dollars, but it's, it's, it's gonna affect the bottom line.
It's disappointing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And what a pain too. I mean, I can't think of anything worse than not have an emergency vehicle be ultimately reliable.
Very frustrating, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
How does this affect your response, and, you know, your response times and everything?
Luckily, it's total of a minute, maybe. Most because it was, it was caught, and I think Mike Ugle was driving it, and he just shut the whole thing down, started it back up. For whatever reason, I don't think he turned the emergency lights on, just in a fluster, and it never happened, but he didn't catch it in his head. He took off, and the truck was fine. And it seems like it, ninety percent of the time, it's happened when you're leaving the fire station.
Doesn't wanna go up in cold, does it?
Apparently.
Yeah.
But, yeah, it's very frustrating to have.
So obviously, our mutual aid partners know this.
Uh, I think Chris Farley is aware of it.
Yeah.
Uh, but.
Just in case.
Just in case, yeah. Yeah, no, and the guys, it, it shouldn't be an actual issue now that the guys know about it, but, like you said, when it first happens to you, they're incredibly flustered and have no idea what just happened. Um, so, it's, I don't think it's gonna be too big of a threat, but just make you aware of it.
Keep us in the loop on that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, Jake Cookson is Training Officer. He and I have been talking, and we've actually, in the last couple of months, and in the future, we're actually stepping up our training. Instead of just doing once a month, we're gonna be doing, training twice a month, as well as training a lot more with other towns. Cause it's, it just, we feel it's good for all the members from each fire department to really know each other, to be comfortable with each other. So that, you know, you can perform tasks without wondering how capable someone else is that you're working with. Other than that, we applied for a five thousand dollar matching forestry grant, and we were awarded that, in which we bought some chainsaws for clearing the roads, some of the water backpacks, portable backpacks, a bunch of portable radios, and almost enough hose to outfit the new truck.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
Yeah, very, very nice to get that.
Yeah.
That's all I have. Any other questions?
Anything else for our chief?
I hate to see you guys coming, but awful glad you're there.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, thank you ver- very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Don.
And we have our Selectmen updates. Josh, anything to share?
I have no updates.
Selectmen lead.
At our most recent MECO Solid Waste meeting, one of the committees that I am part of made some recommendations on verbiage changes and for clarity on the inter-local agreement and the, the other one there, I can't even remember.
By the way.
Yeah, to the board, and I'm, I'm proud to report that all but one were approved as changes so that they would be, all this stuff would be clarified. Some of the stuff was very, very vague. And I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have some of the documentation here tonight. I'll bring that to our next meeting. The only one that didn't get pushed through was one that I was pretty, uh, pretty adamant about, and I was basing, basically, I really felt that, the way it's worded about who is to be at the meetings, it's, it just says, and I don't have it here in front of me, so forgive me if I don't recite it properly, it just says representatives from each participating town. Did I get that right? Something like that. I wanted it to say at least one representative from each town, in case there was a vote, so that each town would be represented at a Board of Directors meeting. When there are gonna be meetings that have a vote that constitute a weighted vote, I'm sure there won't be any town that's not available, but going off that, I felt that just a board meeting should have at least one representative from each town to have a quorum. That didn't go through because that's not how the interpretation to the other towns, not necessarily all the towns, but the other towns, that's not necessarily how it was interpreted. And I, and it may be how I presented it because it brought up a few, it brought up a lengthy discussion on trust. And that's not what I wanted to do. I, I based my decision on what the, on the weighted vote and the, the requirements of the weighted vote. So that's why I made it, that I thought that was important to also have at board meetings for a quorum. But we're gonna talk about it again. That may change, and like I said, at the next meeting, I will bring the, the definitions of what we got and the small changes that we've made so that everybody can see it. And it's interesting, if you like to read, and you got a little extra time, which I haven't found either of those pleasant yet, if you read the inter-local agreement and all the things that govern the MECO Solid Waste Corporation, is something. It, it really is, and some of it is very confusing. And that's what we're trying to do as a governance committee, trying to make things simple and make them clear, straightforward, so.
That's fantastic.
That's all I got.
That's plenty. Um, I have nothing to report. The EMS Review Committee meeting was again canceled because of weather, and I look forward to it being rescheduled soon.
Current, I said basically everything that was going on on that. My committee I sat on didn't do anything, so we do never need any sc- 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 on the day three report.
Okay. Thank you all very much.
Uh, Selectman Garrettson and Selectman Fishman both forgot to say.
Oh, yes!
That the first meeting of the broadband committee has been set for Thursday, February twenty-seventh, I believe.
Indoctrinate yourselves.
With the committee being as large and diverse as it is, herding the cats was a bit challenging, but we found a date that so far, nobody's objected, so.
Congratulations.
Very good.
They did a good job.
I look forward to what comes out of that very much. Uh, and with no further ado, we have before us the Veterans Honor Role Policy, having now a newly formed Veterans Honor Role Committee. Do we need anything from a representative of the Veterans Honor Role Committee? Or does the board wish to discuss the policy at all, or can I have a motion?
I'd like to give you a motion.
Excellent.
I move that the board accept the policy as proposed, with the exception of inserting appropriate for the word request, appropriate for the word requested in section three dot B dot, and instruct the town administrator to reformat the document for the town files.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Seeing nothing, all those in favor. Thank you very much. In hindsight, I may have put you earlier in the agenda, but I appreciate you sticking with us. Yeah, absolutely.
Jake Foster, I'm chairman of the committee. I'm just curious, is the town interested in any of the documentation that took place during the process? And have it for town record purposes or history purposes, what it took and when it happened, and all the information that we gathered in order to construct?
Yeah.
I'll gather all that, and I'll give it to David.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I know I've heard bits and pieces from.
Well, yeah, our, our technical drawings and all the things that were discussed, and all the input that we got, we put down, and we presented.
Yeah.
Ended up, so.
Yeah, that would be wonderful.
Pretty well documented, and I had that, so.
Yeah, that would be wonderful and useful. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you both very much. Anything else from either?
Thank you, Jake.
And David, I think I'm gonna throw this in your lap to maybe give a little introductory on our LIA building update.
Sure. At your last meeting of board, voted to offer to either of both the Lincolnville Historical Society and/or the Lincolnville Improvement Association, the willingness of the board to put an article forward to the voters in June, seeking to gift the LIA building to either of both parties on a condition that it be made structurally sound within a year of the vote to approve the transfer. The, both groups that, that offer was conveyed to, both have politely declined. You have an email that came late Friday. Wasn't part of your packet, because your packet actually got done a little early. Again, again, miracles of miracles. So they both have declined the offer, and in Diane's email on behalf of Historical Society and the LIA, their second paragraph asks that the board consider putting the item on their twenty-fourth agenda, where they would ask that an article be put on the June town meeting warrant to see if the town will continue ownership and appropriate a sum, in parentheses, to be decided, to repair the building to a state that is safe for the public, dot, 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 or some such wording to be determined. So that's, that's where we stand at the moment. And then, obviously, and, sorry to.
I know.
Said thoughts, obviously, in your packet, you had my beautifully hand-drawn.
A flowchart.
That has now, let's see if we can see here, town ownership, no, transferred, is now cycled back up to the top.
Yeah.
Where the continued town ownership.
That's a very helpful little diagram. I, I went, I looked at it right after, I, like, oh, that's it, oh, back in our lap.
Hey, back to you.
So, yeah, I'd love to hear the board's. So, yeah, I'd love to hear the board's thoughts.
Well, it's, it's odd, eh, well, to be put on the agenda for, but to continue and appropriate a sum. I mean, the price tag we got on the thing now is like seven hundred and fifty thousand. I don't know what, I mean, I don't know. Who's gonna determine what the safe, what the state of safe is for the, for the public?
We would. That's our job.
That's our job.
Oh, I don't want that responsibility.
Well, it would be, I mean. Well, it would be the engineering firm would go, okay, it's, you know, that they report to us.
Well, it's exactly the document that we received. In order to make the building structurally sound and safe for the public.
Yeah.
Comes with a three-quarters of a million dollar price tag.
Basically, yeah. I mean, I, I.
I mean, I, I would just like to preempt any conversation by saying I'm not going to be able to attend the February twenty-fourth meeting and, eh, what's that? Suddenly unable, no, I, and I will, I, this has been planned for a long time. And so I would encourage the board, vice chair, to not put it. I, I would rather have a full board if we can to have any of these conversations. Um, but whatever you decide to do is, I support you, but, um, I'm just going to, I, okay. What I'm going to say is, in light of, I feel like we had a very thorough discussion leading up to this, um, and I believe we all agreed that time is of the essence. And it quite literally is of the essence in order to get it on the June ballot and we all agreed that getting it on the June ballot is the right and appropriate thing to do considering that the building is not structurally sound and it is currently being used by the public, it is being used by our tenant and the sub-tenant of the tenant. And so I feel like we are holding a hot potato, so to speak, or a ticking bomb, even though I don't necessarily wanna use that word. Um, so I think postponing a decision and what we're going to do in terms of putting a proposal forward to the voters shouldn't be, shouldn't be sat on.
All right, so, so wait, so, so, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, no.
Eh, wha- was that, that was a finished thought?
Yes.
So, okay, so what they're going to ask is for us to put on, for the town to vote on, if.
To status quo, we pay the bill.
To keep, we keep it and we, and, and would the, would the, would the, would the vote, the question to be voted on by the town would also include a sum of money? So, and it's our decision whether to put that even as a question on the ballot. In other words.
Yeah.
Because I have to say, personally, I don't feel it's fair to ask the town to pony up very much money for this at all. I mean, I, 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 I don't even know what. I mean, if the whole town wanted to keep, if the town showed up and said, we want, we really wanna keep this building, uh, I mean, that would be, then it's almost two separate questions. Then, the, the, the next question would be like, all right, if you guys are all voting, the town wants to keep this building, then how much do, does, you know, the town want to have the town pay for that building? And, you know, I, I don't know. I, I, it's almost two separate questions. I'm not comfortable.
And we, and we can't ask the voters to arbitrarily appoint an amount because we've already had engineers say this is what it's going to cost to make it safe. So we know that. We know the figure that would have to go to the voters in order to make the building safe under our stewardship.
I also don't feel, I don't have the sense, I don't get the sense that there's a majority of town that is dying to save this building. I, I don't, and I'm not, and I'm not trying to, I, I, you know, there's a handful of people that come in. I know it's very meaningful to the people who we've had the meetings with, but I, I don't have a sense of what the rest of, and so, I don't know, do you, you know, do you, do you put out just a preliminary thing to say, how much interest is there in the town to save this building? Can we get a sense of that? I, I would be comfortable putting that up, but as a question to the voters, but to say, you know, do we wanna keep it and do you wanna, right? I don't know. I guess you're saying they go hand in hand. You're saying, is this meaningful enough to you guys to pay seven, to, to, for the town, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
I mean, that really is a question. Do the voters wish to find seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars somehow for the purposes of making the LIA building structurally sound? That's the question. That's what they're asking us to do.
Can we ask if this gentleman wants to speak on this issue?
Does the board wish to, uh, put former selectman Gary in the hot seat if he wishes to address the board?
I would love to hear his opinion. I'd like to give it.
Would you be so kind to share your thoughts with us? Since you have so patiently sat.
Uh, Rosie Gary. I underst- I understand this is a very, very difficult situation. I've talked with several people about this, but, um, you have to, my thoughts are, you have to be real careful because several, several years ago, we went through a very similar situation with the Dean and Ugly property, which some people, some residents felt that it wasn't handled properly and they put a multiple question out there and it just, it just confused the town. So whatever you're going to do, be decisive, be to the point, don't put a multiple, you know, don't put it multiple. Put it a direct, this, does the town want to do this or that?
This or that, right.
That, and that. The, um, the, um, just to elate on some other things, which you have your, you have your thing. The Historical Society and, and the LIA just, just, it, it just, the money isn't there, but they believe that this is a town facility. Um, the only town facility at Lincolnville Beach. The town-owned facility at Lincolnville Beach.
But not public.
What's that?
It is not public.
Um, yeah, I, I can't argue that point because I, I don't have the answer. I would say it is, it is, yeah, okay. I'm not gonna get, I won't waste your time. But very well could be. Very well could be. Um, so, that being said, in, in all fairness, uh, to your comment, John, um, the, the town, uh, when I was a selectman, we had to be very careful not to make decisions for the twenty-three hundred, right, taxpayers, whatever, in, in that same, and so the town really needs to probably make that decision, yes or no. Point-wise, yes or no. Um, and that, I don't know, that's. I don't wanna dig in, I don't wanna waste any more time and I don't wanna dig any deeper, but if you've got a question for me that, of anything that I think the boards might be thinking, I'd be glad to answer it.
Any specific questions?
I've got a general question, which may, Rosie, might have an answer to or not. Um, the Historical Society in particular, if we don't keep this building, we have an awful lot, they have an awful lot of the town's history there. Where's it gonna go? I mean, that, I mean, I'm just throwing that out there. I, I, that's something that's been bothering me and I've been thinking about, we have a lot of stuff there that's unique, very nice to see. Um, I'd love to spend, and I'm as guilty as the next person. I'd love to go up there sometime and spend most of the day just going through the damn thing 'cause every time I go in there and say, I've gotta come back there and do it. Well, I've been a resident of this town for sixty-three years and I ain't done it yet, so I don't know how many other people are in the same boat I am, but that bothers me. Uh, you know, I really would hate to see that get put back in other people's attics and places and not be around to go. Money-wise, I think we've basically proven if the only thing that the town wants is a building to do these things, you could tear it down and put up a new one cheaper. But the site really doesn't warrant spending that amount of money there either. I mean, un- unfortunately, I'd love to come up with, and that's exactly what Rosie was saying, it's, it's a decision the town has to make, but I'd love to come up with a reason that people could get behind why we need the building. And I, and that's something that, that's something that I have a hard time, as I very, um, nicely put it, the la- at our little, uh, meeting the other night, that's, we're not gonna be here when it's paid for, um, will anybody be using it at that point? I mean, that's.
So, just to give you a little background on something, just so you, you guys know, the Historical Society has not been, and, and nobody accused, don't, don't take it. This Historical Society has not been, uh, sitting on its hands since the meeting we all had here or in the roundtable. Uh, we've been, w- w- we have some things in motion. Uh, one of the things that we're in the attempt right now, which hasn't been done before, is to see if this, if this building qualifies for the, uh, National Register. Uh, that would mean a lot if that, if that building did fall in that category. So that is in the process of trying to be sought out and weighed out. I doubt whether it's gonna get, eh, you know, the, and, and going to, the reason they asked for the twenty-fourth, the meeting on the twenty-fourth was knowing that whatever happened had to be done around the first of March in order to get on the, that, that's why, you know, it wasn't to come here and razz you guys. It was, it was almost like a workshop again, you know? Let's all work together on this. Let's all work together on this. So we are doing things, we're having open houses. Almost every Saturday now, we're open to, um, uh, we're inviting, uh, like fifteen people. You're, you're getting, you're getting a mailing, so don't be surprised if one of you get a mail, you know, card in the mail, a personal invitation to come to an open house and we're not asking for any money. We're not asking for anything. We want you to see the building, see what's there and see what the Historical Society is doing for your town. And that's, that's what we're up to. Trying to, trying to get the community involved. And as you guys know, that's not, that's not always easy. Uh, but we did, we did pick up a new member on Saturday and, uh, we had some people that made a very good, some very good suggestions and, um, and, uh, nobody is bad-mouthing anybody. We all realize that this is a problem. But if I could counsel you in any way, I would say, let's work together on this the best we can and not, you know, we're not sitting on our hands on this. We're not just saying, this is a selectman's problem. Let's let them, let's let them deal with it. We are, we are working diligently. The other thing is Diane is away right now. She just took off this morning for a ten-day trip and, and, you know how that gets, gets scheduled and so, so the rest of us are left to do what we can to, you know. And we're not a big society. There's like five active members, active members. There's multiple members, but only five really, really active. Any other questions?
I feel like any, yeah, any questions I would ask you, it, it puts you in a position that you're not necessarily in to speak for large groups.
A big part of me wants to just say, let's try to put this up to, for a private sale and, and, and be done with it. But I, that's a very consequential line that I don't wanna cross tonight. Um, but I just don't see, I don't see that it's in the, in the town's interest to spend this kinda money for this building. I, I just, I don't see the public good being high enough for the majority of residents here.
I, I gotta agree, man. I got, I have a hard time just, I mean, if it was something like, ask the town to put in a hundred thousand dollars or ask the town to put in, you know, some smaller amount, maybe, if the, if, providing that the LA and the LA Jets can, you know, come up with the grand money, to come up with the balance. I mean, but I can't, I don't feel right asking the town to, to put out seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
No.
For this particular building with the limitations that it has on the site and everything, it's just, I, I, I don't feel it's.
Well.
Well, I definitely understand the, the emotion in it. I mean, I have a hard time saying what I just said, but I mean, I, I gotta agree with that. I don't, I'm.
David or Chris?
Could be, eh, you go, yes, but, and I'll speak after you.
This is, this is, ju- just like, uh, Rosie alluded to, I, I'm having trouble with it too, um, because I know other things that we are into and other things that we've got to do, um, that, that are just costing the taxpayers money, but it's gotta get in front of the taxpayers. And it's, he's, he, Rosie is right, it's gotta be a, do we wanna do this or that?
Well, we're obligated to.
Yeah, we're obligated to, so.
And it's the right thing to do, number two.
My, my comment to the fellow selectman here is, don't beat yourself up yet because we don't know what the taxpayers, we don't know what the will of the taxpayers is. I'd have a hard trouble getting behind, I, I've had very uncomfortable conversations with people who recently, with people who are very passionate about that building and what they do. And I've even been told that they would never vote for me again if this went a certain way and I, I'm like, look, we're, we're gonna find out what the taxpayers wanna do first.
Yeah.
Um, I would like to hold on to the building. I'd like to see the town hold on to it. Um, it's expensive. Um, does that mean I would necessarily vote that way later? No. I feel a hell of a lot better about it right now after what Rosie said with what he's doing. Um, primarily because he's doing, they are doing, not just Rosie, but the, uh, Historical Society is doing the one thing that I hadn't considered a way to do and that's to get the people, get people that don't normally go in there, in there and actually see it and see what's going on because the big, my biggest fear is that when you, like Rosie said, it's gonna be a yes-no vote or a one-item vote for him to go on is out of the two thousand voters or so we got playing around here, how many of them even know about what's going on with it? And we'll just say, all that much money? Forget it. And won't even, won't, won't even, um, have an informed decision or as informed decisions I'd like to have them make. That should've got me in trouble.
Yes, sir. Yep.
I, I just feel, and I, I didn't answer David's question when he asked, I think he asked, uh, what would happen to the Historical Society? This is not a threat really. At this point in time, um, try to find somebody's storage.
Yep.
The stuff would go into storage. Historical Society would pretty much be def- and I'm not, this is not a threat or don't take it, the, pretty much go, this is what the conversations would go a little bit defunct at this point in time because you need a, you need some sort or someplace to facilitate. Uh, and maybe somebody would pony up and say, oh, we've got this building. And, you know, or somebody would say, we're gonna build your building or, you know, I mean, there's all kinds of possibilities. Who knows? But we just, we just, we're, we're in the dark with that. So right now, it would, we would be at the mercy of someone saying, I've got garage space. It better be a big garage to put this stuff into or, you know, but it's the, the most important part. And I think, I think you've been up, you've all been up there now, you've all been upstairs.
Oh, yeah.
Been in the, all the files and, um, that stuff needs to definitely be in a dry, good location and, uh, and, uh, that, so. So, the talk right now is, because we're, we're unsure, we don't know any more than you do. And that is that it would sorta be defunct right now, uh, because if, if, if something happened.
And, no, it's not a question for you, it's just a statement. To be clear, the town has a lease with the Lincolnville Improvement Association who then rents space, which the Historical Society pays rent to the LIA for use of the space. So, we're not having a conversation with the lease holder, the, at the Historical Society, where the primary user of the building is the LIA. Just, you know, we're, we're having a beautiful and robust conversation about the Historical Society, which is an incredible thing that we have one. But just to be clear, the, sure.
And so, just to reiterate, I, and yes, I'm only speaking on behalf of the Historical Society's part of that. I'm sorry, I have zero information on the, you know, the Lincolnville Improvement Association, and certainly, uh, they do a great good for the town, da-da, and that all. Uh, but I am not involved with that and I can't speak for them, and so I just apologize that I apologize for any, for overbearing, the Historical Society was the most important part of this.
No, but I think it's important to keep that as part of the conversation.
How does, how does the board feel about the possibility, I don't wanna make a motion yet, just hypothetically, um, about having, having it in front of the town in June, uh, in, in the open portion to discuss selling the building? Because there, we're giving the town a very, a choice, yes or no? And if they say, no, we do not wanna sell it, then that's the town saying, we wanna keep this, and then we can go from there. And then if they say yes, then, then the town has said, we wanna sell this, this property, but I, I would feel better about that than, than saying, do you wanna?
Well, the only thing I'll say about that is it seems like, then, let's say they say yes, then the next question is, do you wanna spend seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to fix it? Which is, you're kinda just, might as well just get right to it.
Right.
You know what I mean? You're gonna end up at that question anyway.
If, if, if they say no.
If they say, if, right, if they say, yeah, we wanna keep it, and then you tell them what the price, that's kinda what Rosie was saying, is like, don't piece, that's almost piecemeals it, cause you're.
Yeah, yeah. David, what's, what's your thoughts?
Um, I agree, that's a very good idea, Josh. The only, um, bubble I wanna pop on that is, is in my experience, that's gonna mean that it's gonna be kept by the town, which I'm not really against, but if you look at most town meetings, you have, on a good day, sixty people there, and most of them watch me grow up. So, you don't have the younger population, or enough of the younger population that's going to sway the boat. And I don't know, I mean, that's not a bad thing, it's decided by the people who care and the people who wanna show up at town meetings, the ones that make decisions for the town. Um, but if it were, if you wanted a representative opinion of the town, a written ballot would get you further. Of a representative cross-section of the town. Um, I really am happy that you guys are doing what you are, having people, you know, sending personal invitations out, I hope that more people
That's great.
actua- actually show up and go look around. I really, that's, that's a good thing.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. David, remind, you expect, based on past performance, a reasonably higher turnout as opposed to non-election years for this June? Um, given that it's, um.
Yeah, the June town meeting vote will, obviously it won't be as high as November. Couple reasons, well, November is the presidential election. We're gonna have a, um, I presume a massive turnout. Um, it, presidential years are always higher. Um, I would, as much as I encourage people to vote every time, I would try to encourage this board not to think about doing, uh, too much local on the November ballot for a couple of reasons. One, we're gonna have a massive turnout, and I missed the last presidential election. And from what I understand, there were lines astronomically long and frustrating for everybody involved, because there were multiple ballots and multiple machines and lots of people. Uh, the other is obviously, as the chair alluded to earlier, time is a bit of an absence. We will miss another year. Um, June will have not only the local election, um, there will be, uh, primary elections for state representatives. Um, I believe there's gonna be a state referendum question, or perhaps more than one in June. I'm not a hundred percent sure of that. We will have, I'm gonna guess we'll have in excess of fifty percent of voter turnout in June. Put us up there.
Just not as good as it should be, but it's pretty darn good considering national averages.
Certainly, um, uh, the ballot in June will have more voters participate than traditionally town meetings. Even when we had a contentious issue in town, we still only had four hundred so people show up.
Yep.
Which pales to any ballot question.
Yep.
So, the biggest, I'm, I'm really worried about, so if you look at that report, being a town building, we're on the hook for everything that's going on down there. Um, I'm really worried about the deficiency in structure for the upstairs. Um, compared to the load that's already on the floor upstairs. What is the function, and, and I'm sorry, right up front that I'm asking this, but what does the Lincolnville Improvement Association actually do for functions in that building? Other than meet, use the, the makeshift kitchen that's there from time to time? Is there somebody on this board or in the audience that might be able to explain a little bit of that to me?
Anyone?
Before, anyone, anyone out there, call in, call in.
No, don't call in, you can't, you can't, do not call in.
But, but before, before I go any further, if someone could expand on that. I'll try. Oh, my phone's ringing, no.
Probably, probably I oughta try, cause Rosie, Rosie already said he couldn't speak for the, for the LIA.
Would there be anybody that could expand on that?
The Lincolnville Improvement Association, um, holds a monthly meeting, I believe on the third Thursday of the month, um, from April or May through, I believe, November. Uh, beyond that, there are s- I'll call them subgroups, but I don't think they're officially associated with the Lincolnville Improvement Association. When the Lincolnville Improvement Association has a meeting, they have a potluck dinner and have a speaker, and then they have their business meeting to discuss any business the group has. Um, in addition to that, the Women's Club meets in the LIA building. I don't know how frequently. Um, I'm not a member of the Lincolnville Women's Club. Um, and there are others that utilize the building on a sporadic basis, and they do attempt to lease it. And then, of course, the Christmas by the Sea has their after bonfire event at the LIA, which is usually a, um, well-attended event. I think that's probably pretty close to the summary of what goes on in there.
Okay, so at any given time, there might be fifty to seventy-five people at an event that might not necessarily all be in that building at once.
Yeah, I've been a invited speaker to the Lincolnville Improvement Association
Yep.
for a number of years. Um, and, you know, I'm, I must be the biggest draw there, no, I'm just joking about that. There's probably
That goes without saying.
Forty to forty-five people, and I think that's not untypical of their meeting. I've attended a couple others, um.
And as far as the Christmas by the Sea thing, that's, that's people rotating in and rotating out.
That's standing room only.
Yeah, okay, alright, so I'm just trying to do a little forward thinking here, and I'm still having trouble getting behind going to the voters and asking for money to save this building, that I'm having tr- uh, having trouble justifying its significance. But what if, so, the Lincolnville Improvement Association is, is pretty important because of the scholarships that they create for, and I'll tell you right up front, my daughter received this scholarship from them, and I was some, back in that day, I was some appreciative of it. Um, and I know these other people that have received it have been as well. But I don't wanna say that the Lincolnville Improvement Association isn't as important as the Historical Society, but what would happen if the Historical Society moved everything they have out of the tower and brought it down? And claimed the downstairs space as their own? With a little bit of creativity with the Lincolnville, uh, the LIA, either they can continue to meet there, the, 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 the problems that I'm seeing are the support for upstairs, the kitchen is not compliant, and we've got doors that need to be replaced, and we need to do something with the bathroom. And down the road, put in some windows and this and that. But why can't the Historical Society be moved to the first floor? That takes our liability of the situation upstairs right completely away. The LIA seems like they could meet in the same space, because the Historical Society is there during the day and weekends. Or whatever, I don't know the schedules, but I'm sure that the schedules can be adjusted so that one can be there when the other isn't. Uh, I'm just trying to come up with some ideas, could roof the place, could put a few windows in, get rid of the kitchen, I'm sorry, but that is a major expense in itself. Uh, do an upgrade on the bathroom, which is a, either his or her bathroom. Uh, I, I, I'm just throwing that out there. I don't know if anybody's thought of that, I don't know if somebody's beat it right to death and don't even wanna consider it.
David, you had a thought?
Well, you brought up a good thought. Um, and again, we're, we're speaking without a rep- Well, then we're speaking without a representative here, but, um, if you could flip-flop the places, uh, if you took the stored materials out from the upstairs, I dare say that the LIA could hold their meetings upstairs without any problems, I don't think that they have people enough to weigh what the goods and the people do now. I mean, maybe.
Reverse the roles, just reverse the, yeah.
Well, first I'd have to say that when the lease comes up, we, what we're talking about is renegotiating the lease for the use of the building. And it also, you know, to save us some speculation, I think it would take us going back to our friends at Two A Architects, and, again, we just had this con- conversation with Stephanie. You have to ask the right questions of the professionals that you have hired, and so, if our question has changed, we may get a different answer in the context of what we have been outlined thus far.
So, we ask them, can you put fifty people with no stuff up there that's safe for meeting every, no, every day, and they go, oh yeah, that'd be fine.
Can you, can you speak?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you gotta sit up.
At least, at least on the vote, it hopes.
I'm just re, saying, what you're saying is, in other words, you go back to Two A and say, uh, what if we put all the stuff downstairs and can, can the top four handle fifty people for a meeting? And, and, uh, without, without refurbishing the whole building? If they came back and said, yeah, then.
Then when it, when it falls in and we're not, you know?
Yeah, then, then you've got a different way to look at it, and you can budget two years out to do X, Y, and Z, and, okay, this is the important thing we've gotta do now. I don't know, I'm just trying to come up with ideas that, um, maybe will help me get behind this and, and many other people.
I'll throw, I'll throw some cold water on it.
Oh, yeah.
On that idea, and, we can always go back and ask. If memory serves me from reviewing that report, which it has been a month or so since I read it last, um, there was some sort of statement from the folks that evaluated structural that upstairs wouldn't be sufficient even for any residential type load, and I think if you put forty people upstairs, I don't, well, I don't have an upstairs, but I wouldn't put forty people upstairs in my house. And, uh, but we could, we could certainly ask that question. Um, and I, I would find it challenging, however, I can't speak for the LIA and/or the Historical Society to think that they're going to coexist in the same space.
Yeah.
I don't think you could take the displays from upstairs, put them downstairs and still have
Still room for people to lunch.
sit down with dinner. But, you know.
That being said, we have a wonderful community building that would accommodate that nicely.
Well, and it, and I think it's good that the board is thinking outside the box, trying to find a workable solution for all, and I don't envy the decisions you have to make.
Sure, yeah.
So, just, just to let, let you know, we've limited, the Historical Society, uh, in their open house has limited, you know, if fifteen people or twenty people show, show up, we are entertaining them in the LIA downstairs and taking only, uh, five people plus an instructor or Connie or Diane or myself upstairs while the others are down. We're not allowing, we're not allowing fifty, we were, we were told, and so we're, we're, we're doing our, we're really trying to do our part, so we're taking only five people upstairs at a time.
We appreciate that, so, and that's, that is actually an excellent segue into the, what I was just going to say is, not to entirely sidestep this conversation, but I think regardless of what we do or do not decide to put on the June, and I recommend a written ballot, is I would encourage the board to, uh, quickly come up with a use and policy for the building um, that would need to be, I think it should be a legal device that we get our friend in Portland to help us come up with, since it is still occupied with the knowledge that we have, that our current tenants and sub-tenants, uh, understand, acknowledge, and is made available to the public so that they know when they're entering that building that it is of an age and a status.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
Should that be a motion? So, so moved?
Second.
Sorry.
Yeah, sorry to both of you, yeah.
Any, any discussion on that one? All those in favor? Thank you, on a future agenda. And in the meantime, we very much appreciate that the current users are aware and encouraging safe use of the building.
Um, so, the report, in terms of immediate danger to life and limb, we've got the, uh, we've got the, the upstairs not being structurally sound, the supports. Um, the basement, the, the, um.
There are, there are posts, columns, whatever you wanna call them, underneath the first floor that tran- that are designed to transfer the load of the first floor to the ground. Some of those are
Crappy.
Sketchy, crappy, thank you, are compromised.
Cut his bone.
There's the word I'm looking for.
Compromised, yes.
Well, some are either fallen over, or some have some gaps, um, between the post and either the ground or the, or the joists. The risk is minimal, I think, compared to the upstairs.
The first, if I do recall though, the first floor, there were qualifications around, or around the use of the first floor even still though, in the initial report that we got from Carmen. I don't remember, I, it's been long enough that I don't remember. But it's, it's not as though, first floor's good, second floor eh, they're both eh, to different degrees.
They, yeah, they, they. Yeah, they, they, certainly there are a number of issues in the building that needs to be. And foundational support and support of the second, first floor, the second floor and the roof. I mean, just, if you were to build it today with today's code. You would not replicate the construction of that building. And in order to. Get to the load limits as recommended or suggested or required today requires modification. Substantial modification.
Which brings us back to the fact that the clock is ticking and we really do need to put something. Before the voters.
And if you, if you're not looking and, and I understand the hesitancy to make a decision. But it, um, before we leave, it would be helpful for you all. To, if you need something more from staff or consultants. Or from the public or from the LIA or the Historical Society. To set forth what that information is so that it can be obtained for you. Cause, uh, the clock is ticking.
What is our deadline?
I knew you were gonna ask that and I knew I was gonna be.
Just so, you know, it'd be helpful to know.
Backing up, uh, town meeting is June eleventh or ninth or something like that. Uh, we have to have absentee available thirty days prior. We have to get the thing out to the printer and programmed and, you know, you're talking. Mid-March, really, if you want it on the ballot. For June.
So if we didn't do it the twenty-fourth, we really.
We would have.
Be able to do it the first meeting of March. Yeah, we, and I agree with you, I think it should be a full board. Decision.
And, y- y- you know. I don't know if this makes it any easier or any worse, but I'll throw it out there for your consumption. When an article that require, I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk about an article to fix the building. Just cause I think that involves an appropriation of money. An article that requires appropriation of money will have a recommendation from the Board of Selectmen. And will have a recommendation from the Budget Committee on the printed ballot. And I'm not suggesting that I think this is a good idea, but I'm just putting it out there to you. You could put forth a question to say.
That we do not recommend.
Does, right, does the town wish to appropriate, borrow, I mean, we get, if you're gonna go that route, we gotta figure out how we're gonna pay for it. Whether it comes out of borrowing or taxing or a combination of the two or saving. Um, you could put forth that question and say Board of Selectmen recommends passage three to two. Recommends, you know, does not recommend article three to two, you know, ha- whatever your comfort level is. Um, and, you know, let the chips fall where they may. And certainly, um, if you look at the simplified flow chart, that's very simplified. If the question is going forward to the voters, somebody's gonna have to take an educational component lead on getting that out. There, from a practical perspective, there's almost nothing worse than handing somebody the ballot at, on Election Day. They head over towards the booth and they say, what does this mean? Or, you know, I didn't know we were voting on this. And that word and the implications behind the question. Needs to be adequately conveyed to the voter as the implications of the decision. And you can't, there are certain things you can write on the ballot and there are certain things you cannot. So whatever we choose.
So you're saying we could write a no vote means and a yes vote means?
Well, you could, I think the question could be clear enough, i- again, if you're talking about, well, either, either. Maintaining ownership or selling. I think the question can be clear enough and concise to the person. I mean, you can't put down there, uh, on an explanation. If you vote yes, then your taxes are going up, you know, that's.
But in the past, we've had.
Explanatory notes.
Yeah, where it says, the link, the town of Lincolnville currently owns a building at this address. That it has been traditionally used by the Lincolnville Improvement Association and the Historical Society. It is, and can we go into details that it is? I mean, I'm just wondering. How much context?
When you get to the explanatory notes, you, it has to be very carefully crafted. So that it's, um, it's not, um, influence.
Who, who, that's, um.
Um, a- any and all of the things that go to town meeting are reviewed carefully by our town attorney.
Yeah, David, what were you?
Well, in, um. Favor stir of the pot, uh, what would, uh, what would go wrong with if we just put, um, on the ballot? Um. The improvement, the, the, um, LIA building. Uh, do, are you in favor of spending seven hundred and twenty-five thou-? About a hun- seven hundred and twenty-five hundred thousand, what was it, seven hun- the amount of money? Uh, three quarters of a million, are you in fa- are you in favor of spending three quarters of a million dollars to fix the LIA building? So that it is safe for its current use of, of the Historical Society and the LIA? And if the townspeople say yes, great, they wanna spend the money, we spend the money. If they say no, okay, we're still on the building, the people are still there. Um, we then go back to, okay, they don't wanna spend that. We go back to the flow chart again and where we go. Uh, I mean, I mean, at some point in time, we've gotta ask the townspeople and I fully expect they're gonna say no to that. But that may get enough people going that, okay, what, if there's no interest, well, then let's sell.
Well, if they say yes, we then have to.
We then, we then have to, okay, we're gonna have to as a board come up with a decision of how we're going to pay for this. But we don't need to figure that out until they say yes, do we?
I think you have to ask the people. If you're going to talk about money, you're going to have to outline the plan for where that money's coming from.
Right.
Yep.
And, you know, I'll just liken it for a moment to when we did the school project. Um, you know, it said the authority to borrow. Get the numbers wrong, five and a half million dollars. Or the authority to, and, but we were gonna expend seven and a half because two million came from fundraising. You know, that's roundabout weird numbers. But, um, you know, that's why typically on an article at town meeting, it says. To see what some, the town will vote to raise and appropriate. Appropriate gives you, the Board of Selectmen, the authority to expend that money. Raise means we're raising your taxes to do it. And this might be a borrowing, this might be some from savings, it might be some from fundraising. It might be some from, you know, pennies from heaven, I don't know. But you have to, you have to tell the people how much money you want and where it's coming from. And get their authority given to you as the board to expend that money. Otherwise, we raise it and we keep it.
If you just say raise and appropriate, appropriate, then, then you're, of course, you're suggesting raising taxes. But does that also cover in case we wanted to borrow?
No.
Raise is only, so you would have to word it like raise, appropriate and or borrow.
Yeah, if you, um.
You'd have to specify.
Yeah, or some combination of the multitude of options available to you. If the board is now leaning towards or wants more information about. How do we fund this? If we were gonna go down that route. Um, we could put together for you, you know, another decision tree. Um, borrowing, you know, how long do you borrow on a building? Twenty, twenty years, thirty years? Um, you know, usually no longer than the life expectancy of what you're gonna be into. Um, but if you start talking, I'll do, I'll do the math easy, I think it's easy. Um, if it was three quarters of a million dollars and you're gonna go about and borrow that for thirty years, it's twenty-five thousand dollars a year. And then you, obviously you have the interest, so you have to tell people, hey, we're gonna, you know, borrow the money. And you, the, the voters then commit. People for future years to pay for it, like they did with the school, like we did with the road bond in two thousand eight that we're still paying for.
I certainly would like to explore all funding options prior to making a decision. I don't feel like we're gonna get to a point where we're just gonna, this is what we're gonna put on the ballot tonight. I also, I know that Amanda and the team of experts that she brought together. To give us that package did an absolutely thorough job. I'm just wondering if there's any more shaking of that tree that we can do to break out numbers. Pair down numbers, I don't, I don't know, is there, is there any way of? Looking at it in chunks, in, I don't, I don't know. Is there, is there another way to look at? Making that building structurally sound?
Well, you can make it structurally sound and not be real happy with the building. I mean, the, the, uh, well, the roof, the roof is a prime example. The asphalt shingles on the roof have nothing to do with the structural stability of that building. With the exception of once the water gets in, we're gonna be doomed. Um, but we could make the second floor, the first, support the second and the first floor. Not do any of the siding challenges, not address the windows, not address the heat, not address AD. Well, we might have to do ADA because of the amount of money we're spending, but, you know. And then we're gonna be looking at doing, I'm just picking these numbers off, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in year one. And then what, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in year two and then three hundred thousand in year three because prices went up and. You gotta pay to mobilize each time, I mean. Gonna have to rip the Band-Aid off, I think, at some point to figure out a way.
Yeah, Josh, did you have?
Yeah, I just want us all to, before our next meeting, think about. Other things you think the town could spend seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Dude, I, I'm having a hard time with this, I gotta admit, man, I mean, we, we were just having a conversation about.
Thirteen thousand dollars.
Thirteen thousand dollars to do the drainage for the field. I can think of a hundred things off the top of my head that I would spend seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars on for the town. Way more net cleanup, the cemeteries, like, I mean, there's, I, I'm so sorry. The pier, I mean, we're having issues, this just does not. The school, I, I mean, it's just so far down the list for me.
I know, we cut, we come back to being very uncomfortable.
And I don't wanna sound heartless like Dave coined that phrase earlier, but I, I, I mean, I just, you know, it's. Like, I don't even wanna ask the town, I don't even wanna ask the town this, I'm gonna be totally honest. I don't even ask the town, cause I'm afraid it would pass and then we've gotta come up with how we're gonna raise seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars or something. I personally can't get behind it all. I'm, that's it, I mean, for me, and I just feel like we're spinning our wheels, um. I mean, this is just, I feel like this is. Yeah, it's, it's, um.
Well, John, it's one of the things, I, I, you're not alone and I think it's just one of the things that we've gotta do what, we've gotta do what the will of the, the taxpayers.
No, no, I understand, absolutely, I mean, it's not our decision to make, you know, we gotta put something before the taxpayers for sure. But.
But it is our responsibility to think about the infrastructure pieces that we are responsible for. That every single person in our town uses, which is safe roads.
Yeah.
Trash, solid waste, uh, emergency medical services, hopefully not everybody needs those. But we sure as heck wanna have them on hand when.
I mean, there's also, like, I think about the McGonagall Dam issues, that what, what's gonna come of that? And, you know, ultimately that is an important thing and are we gonna be on the hook for X amount of money and, you know.
We have no idea, John.
Have to come back to the taxpayer to ask for probably, and if, if. You know, this, this big chunk of change has been, I don't know, I, you know, I, I just feel like if you're gonna test the patience of the taxpayers.
Well, and to, and to potentially make an incredibly unpopular statement. But I might as well rip the Band-Aid off right now, cause it's gonna come up when we talk about the budget. The library, which was a project that we, it's town property that we lease to the library. We didn't pay for the amazing and beautiful renovation to that building, it was gifted to the town. And now we have money in our budget, we were told that we would never have, that it would never cost the town anything to have this library. And now it's in our budget. So, thing, thing.
It's not a tremendous amount, right?
It isn't a tremendous amount, but at the same time, it all adds up.
Realistically, right, yeah.
And so, getting back to that, things have an insidious way of adding up and creeping up. And we are tasked with thinking about all of the monies that we collectively raise. And some of us are unable to and some of, some of us have lost our homes because of it. We have to think about those people and how things are used and how those dollars are divided.
I'm starting to see the wisdom of your question, is it worth it putting to the voters? Do we wanna put this up for private sale or not?
We don't have to put this sum of money in front of the voters ever.
Well, if the town voted, we wanna keep the town owning it, then, then you do, but, but you could just say, you know, I mean, it could, I mean, could it be? Could you inform the town that we'd offered to give it to the LIA and LHS and they declined and so now here we are? Do you wanna sell the, do we wanna sell it for private sale?
And perhaps that, that would generate a lot of, of excitement and interest. And a group of, of people would come together and, and buy the property for one dollar and save it. And, and, and they could do that, we're not tearing it, we don't wanna tear it down, right? I hope that, I mean, again, look at the library, look at, look at what the community did, they came together and it's, it's such a huge asset now to our community. But we didn't have to spend seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for it.
And I, I've gotta be honest, I'm really disappointed that both organizations that inhabit the building. And hold such immediate value, necessary value in the building. Didn't come back to us with a more creative counter offer other than keep it the same and come up with the money.
Yeah, yeah.
That's really disappointing to me. I mean, I hear and I understand the intrinsic and emotional value. But just no, pay for it feels. Um, inherently disrespectful to the rest of the voters of Lincolnville, taxpayers of Lincolnville. Yes, sir. Sorry, sorry to.
It's fine, couple things, couple things. First of all, um, I, um. On, on your comment you just made. I, I think that my G, uh, my reaction to that, uh, comment. Is that, um. You should, there should be, Diane should be here, she has the answer to that. Or she may have a better answer than I am, I've just, I mean, I'm just stuck here trying to do the best I can. And, and the thing is, um, she would have, uh, not for the sake of argument. But a much more better rebuttal than to say the disappointment that they didn't come back with that. I'm s- I, I know that she has a very rational, reasonable.
Why didn't she, why, why wasn't that in our email? Why didn't she, why, why wasn't that in our email?
Um.
I mean, I know you're not in a position to answer that question, so it's not, it's not fair for me to ask that of you.
I know, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, man, that's fine, the other thing that, and I just don't wanna take up any more of your time, but I can't help myself. So, I am totally, myself, totally unclear. How a woman stood up here and said the tune of six hundred and fifty thousand. And then somehow this figure, and I'm, okay, you may be talking, if you're talking three thousand for this and so much for the ball field. All of a sudden, we're a hundred thousand dollars difference in a matter of, you know, and it's like. Well, wait a minute, we were talking, was that included the roof, which was not in the original proposal? And these were things that were brought up after the fact, that didn't have anything to do with what we were talking about. Right there for that night, for the six hundred and fifty thousand.
Yes, but, it's so, it's really, you know, people do this, you know, from sitting on the board for years and years. It's very easy to, uh, take a budget and start cherry picking numbers that are more or less attractive to make your argument.
Yes.
And as you know from sitting on the board for years and years, it is incumbent upon the decision makers. To not necessarily look at the lowest number and assume that that's where we're gonna come in at. And so, you know, we were looking at the base estimate of six hundred and twenty four thousand, one hundred and twenty five dollars, which included a ten percent contingency. There was an option for a five hundred and eighty thousand dollars, seven hundred and, seven hundred and thirty one dollars. With ten percent contingency, however, there is plus, plus, plus of things that were not included in that. So you can choose to only focus on either the six twenty four or the five eighty, but that would be an unrealistic number. To look at, and so, when you look at professional services, administration, other costs. A true, a true level of contingency, you're looking at much closer to seven hundred thousand dollars. Or seven hundred and twenty six thousand dollars. And as Bob Ploss brought up, he said, let's be honest, it's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So if we wanna take it back to a realistic number to throw around, we should look at six seventy five or seven twenty six. But we're not far off the mark.
I under, I understand that.
One other quick thing, even if we're talking about five eighty.
That's still.
It's a tremendous number, I, I mean, for, and again, in that whole sort of list of, you know, priorities, I mean.
Well.
Right.
I, yeah, I, I'm really not here to ag, you know, and I know you're not, and I'm really here not to picket things and argue the point. Um, I just would encourage you to make, again, make this, make this crystal. Clear, if you, whatever you do for a ballot, make sure that you have gone the extra mile and made this crystal clear to the voters. So they fully, fully understand what's going on, just so the town's off the hook is not the thing. I've been through this, and I was not, I was never satisfied with that.
Yeah.
You know what I'm talking about. And, um, and it was, and it's, and just crystal clear. If you wanna wash your hands of it, do it in a very. Proper manner, that's all I'm asking.
Yep. And thank you for sticking with it, and yet again, being the messenger that we get to beat up. I'm sure you, you're good for it, I know you're good for it.
Just, just be careful everywhere around, just be careful that, you know. On accusations, because, you know, it just takes a spark lately, and the spark turns into a campfire. And the campfire turns into a brush fire, then people, we've got enough things going on in the country, in the town and stuff, where things are all, you know. I encourage you again, work together, work together, and, and not, you know, because someone made a, a quick statement. Without rationally maybe thinking it out better or having time and being rushed. Um, take that into consideration and be willing to listen to another rational point.
Absol- absolutely, no, I completely get it, and I get that life happens, and yet, we basically have two more meetings. To, to make what is a very hard decision, so unfortunately, we don't have the time to sit around. And have handholding meetings and visioning. We don't have that kind, we don't, we, we don't have that luxury, so to have the tables be turned on us and suggest. Well, I can't believe you, you all are being so rash and heartless.
I'm sorry you did that way, cause it didn't come across at our meeting that way at all, it wasn't meant to be. Here you go, selectmen, you do kick it, it wasn't the attitude at all lately, and please, I'd like to erase that whole thing from my mind. That that was not the re, how it came across, I hate emails. I'd rather look you in the eye and tell you exactly what's on my mind, and that didn't, I, I don't have anybody here to.
Yep.
To look you in the eye and, and emails or letters or whatever, you can't read what that person was really trying to say to you.
Sure.
I'm saying, be very careful of emails and things like that.
Sure, yeah.
True, but.
So here we are, we have a refusal.
Dave said we don't want it, we want you to own it, and we want you to raise the money to pay for it.
And so.
And we're stuck with, well, the bill they're telling us is somewhere between five eighty and seven fifty, and.
So again, I throw it back in the board's lap, the fact that we have this meeting, the twenty fourth. And whatever the next Monday is, um, coming up in March.
What can we put on the ballot for June for a yes or no question? For the town, so that they can tell us, do they want us to, do they want the building preserved and safe? For town usage, or do they want to? Let us dispose of it by whatever manner we can see fit. Um, how do you word that to the town? You've gotta put some dollar value to it, because if you don't put a dollar value on it, they're gonna say, of course we wanna keep it.
Yep.
But if you don't, but if you don't put.
And the hard part is, is that even assigning a dollar figure to it, whether it's five hundred thousand dollars or a million dollars. So many of the numbers that we are tasked with putting before the voters are so obtuse. There, it's, it's really hard to put in context what it actually means, and that's so often what we hear. What's it gonna do to my taxes?
Yep.
And that's a very hard question, you know, if we're tacking on an additional thirty thousand dollars a year to our taxes, it's. Slightly easier to, um, explain, and maybe that's the, you know. It comes down to phrasing.
If it would be helpful. Um, we could probably draft two. Distinct separate articles, if it would help the board informing its decision as to, um, which way. Which avenue on the flow chart you wish to go, along with, um, the. Um. I won't say fix it, I'll say stabilize it, preserve it option, we could give some funding options. To the board to help that, help you have an understanding, but also help anybody out there in the, in the world that was interested. Have some, you know, some implications behind that financial choice. I don't know if it advances the cause much, but if you need it, we can, I mean, we're gonna have to do it at some point, the preference, obviously. If you can hone in a decision, we only have to write one, but if you can, we, you know, writing a second's not the end of the earth.
I think while there were many points that were well made, and John and Josh, I think you have very valid points. I would feel. That we hadn't done our due diligence if we didn't take David up on the offer he just presented.
Oh, I think that's.
Truly looking at funding implications, whether it is increasing the bottom line by thirty thousand dollars a year. Through a bond plus interest, or if it is a partnership of fundraising, or, or some other. You know, wonderful collaborative. Intangible thing, or divesting, you know, it, I, it is up to our voters. To make that call, and if we, I don't feel like, I've gotten that sense from any of us, that we're completely sound of understanding that. And so, getting to that point makes a lot of sense.
It would be really helpful, yeah.
Yeah.
You are, whatever you choose to do, whatever you choose to do, short of. Doing nothing, um, obviously is going to a vote. And whatever you put forward, you know, you go back to the loop, if whatever. You have to put forward what you think is, in my opinion, you put forward what you think is in the best interest of the town. And that, put that forward to the voters, the voters will tell you quickly whether or not they agree that it's in the best interest of the town. And then if the answer's yes, you've got a path, and if the answer's no, you go back to the loop, start again. What's the next best thing, you know, what do you think, and eventually, you're gonna get there.
Yep, and I would say, if any other proposals that are going to be brought forward to us at the next couple of meetings. Involve, say, partnership or collaboration in raising capital funds, that it have a clear goal, commitment, and timeline. Associated with it.
So that that can be put into the wording.
Because vague, because vague amounts and vague timelines and vague commitments, we, we, we cannot work. In that context.
Does not help.
As well meaning as it might be, if it doesn't work out, we're left holding the bag. Of an undetermined amount of dollars, so.
The select board be charged with raising appropriating somewhere in the neighborhood of.
So, I guess that's what I, I think, you know, a partnership or a collaboration could be a wonderful, wonderful thing. With the caveat of it being very clear. So.
So, i- is the plan that you'll have this ready by the next select board meeting?
Mm-hmm.
And then after that.
Decision be the first weekend.
Exactly, then the actual decision.
Yeah.
Yeah, yep.
Yeah, cause the, there are, there, even within these two distinct paths. There are avenues, you know, where it branches off and goes in different directions, so whatever we come up with may need to be reworked, but that's all right.
Yeah, but it gives some.
It helps you to formulate your decision.
Mm-hmm. Okay, anything more on this for this evening, okay, let's move along.
Oh, yes, there is, do you want, want me to convey to the Lincolnville Improvement Association and the Lincolnville Historical Society? That to be continued on the twenty fourth, or do you want them here when there's five a year, or what do you?
Well, maybe some, something like, some communication about if they have, like.
I mean, certainly if they have a proposal that they feel that they will have ready in hand for the twenty fourth. I would never wanna discourage someone from coming to the select board, ever.
We'll have this item on the agenda from here till you make a decision. Okay, just checking.
Okay, that being put to bed for now, we've got appointment of election warden and additional ballot clerks, thanks Rosie.
Thanks, Rosie.
For March third, twenty twenty, can I have a first motion, please?
I move that the board approve the town clerk's appointment of David Kenny as election warden for the March third, two thousand twenty election.
Moved and seconded, any discussion, seeing nothing, all those in favor? And before we get to the next one, there's a long list of people who have been, uh, ballot clerks. And I was asking David, that I've always been sort of curious to get a little more involved in it. So I threw my hat in the ring, which I can, because I'm not on the ballot, so I thought it was a really good opportunity. To kinda get in there and see how it works, so, um, thank you for considering me, and I'm gonna abstain.
Need a motion?
Please.
I move to confirm the town clerk's appointment of Jean Bartley, Hannah Burke, Laidly Dunn. And Rebecca Richards as election clerks for the March third, two thousand twenty voting.
Second.
Moved and seconded, uh, any discussion, seeing nothing, all those in favor, I'm abstaining, thank you all. It should be fun. Uh, and it is that time of year again, with this crazy weather we've been having. Our road commissioner would like permission to, uh, post the roads, so if I could have a motion for that.
I move that the board of selectmen authorize the road commissioner to post the roads for weight limits, as he deems to be in the best interest of the town. And further that the board authorizes the use of our signature stamps on these postings.
Moved and seconded, any discussion, seeing nothing, all those in favor? And then David, do you wanna give a brief preamble for, uh, number thirteen?
Sure, um. Property taxes, um. Uh, for some people occasionally end up in arrears, where they owe more than just the current year's taxes, they might have last year's taxes too. Um, the law allows, on the order of Board of Selectmen, that when people come in and make payments. That we apply it to the oldest taxes first, which really only makes sense, because those would be the taxes that we foreclose on first. Um, but, that being said, there is this, uh, funny little bankruptcy code. That some people do apply or find themselves in bankruptcy court, and that throws another whole wrench into the works. And so we've had a policy, we used to have a very simple policy that said you apply it to the oldest first, that got changed, what, ten years ago? See if I can find it, so, where's the old one?
I don't know, I was just looking at it, um.
That got changed a number of years ago to comply with the, um.
Yeah, ten years ago.
Ten years ago to comply with the bankruptcy code then, and low and behold, they've gone and changed that again now. And so, we've changed the policy again, we, for the vast majority of people, they're not in bankruptcy. We're gonna apply it to the oldest, and if you are, we're gonna follow the policy, which is very hard to read now. There, I talked around that one, didn't say anything today.
Nope, that's perfect, any questions about that, can I have a motion then, please?
I move that pursuant to Title thirty six, MRSA, section nine zero six, that the board approve the order. Of the Board of Selectmen concerning tax payments.
So moved?
Second.
Seconded, any further discussion, seeing nothing, all those in favor, thank you very much. And we have the treasurers and payroll warrants to approve and sign. Can I have a motion?
I move that the board approve the treasurer's and payroll warrants.
Moved and seconded, any discussion, seeing nothing, all those in favor? And does the board have any other items it wishes to discuss? Seeing nothing, can I have a final motion?
I move to adjourn.
Uh, any discussion, nope, all those in favor? No discussion, nope.
Don't sign the first one, come by.
Oh, yeah.
Please.
Yes, sir.